I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Board members, it's up to you if you would, you can remove your mask at your desk if, because of our separation, if you so choose, as long as you're at your table. This is the Board of Finance meeting for RBB. We have two meetings tonight. And the, so this is the Board of Finance. And during the organizational meeting, all board members who are in the Board of Finance were appointed to be on the Board of Finance, and they are all present tonight. The first order of business is to elect a president for the Board of Finance. Do we have a nomination?
Who's the president now, Mr. President?
I believe that I am.
You are?
Yes.
I would make a motion that Mr. Kerr continue as president of the Finance Committee.
I'd second that.
Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now we have need for a secretary. So is there a nomination for a secretary? I believe that Mrs. Mary was the secretary of the Board of Finance as well.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Demoss.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Are there none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we have a designation of depositories. I'll look to Jerry, Dr. Sanders, for that.
Yes. So every year, we, this is a regular agenda item during the Board of Finance meeting, and gives us an opportunity to designate our depositories. And we would like to recommend the Board approve Peoples State Bank, Old National Bank, and Trust Indiana as our depositories.
I make a motion to accept Dr. Sanders' recommendation.
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments?
What, it was Peoples, Old National, and?
Peoples, State Bank, Old National Bank, and Trust Indiana.
Is that the same as we've done in the past?
Yes.
Any further questions or comments? Are there none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next is a report of our previous year investments and financial report. Mr. Irwin.
I'll start with our investments report for 2020. Again, we, Dr. Sanders had just mentioned the people that we use for our depositories. Our total interest on investments for the district during the calendar year 2020 was This is just shy of $14,000 lower than the cumulative total during the calendar year of 2019. And this was, again, like many things, due to COVID. And so the interest gained during the pandemic in many of those months decreased during that time. And again, that's something that you see monthly on the cash flows that I give you. The table that I included in what went out in the board packet showed a breakdown of the interest on those investments. And so in the education fund, there's $24,569.76. The GO bond was $9,336.85. Scholarship accounts, $95.96. And then some, like dividends, was $209.22 for the cumulative total of $34,217.9. I also provided to you, and I put that up on your guys' table, was some snapshots and just looking at the DOAB fiscal indicators. Starting back last year, they had made the requirement that we make a reporting during the Board of Finance meeting on our finances. I know some of the things that we do with our cash flows probably isn't typical around the state with what a lot of school corporations do, just to make sure that you guys stay up to date with those financials. And so it's a matter of just making sure that you guys are getting that information and the transparency piece. What I did was I provided you some screenshots and then the link to the actual DOAB site. A lot of this information is the stuff that we provide you with throughout the course of the year and on a monthly basis as to what's going on. Again, our ADM, our September count this year was down from both counts last year. This was something that was true for the vast majority of school corporations across the state, again, due to COVID. Our annual deficit surplus showed the same type of growth as last year. It was lower than last year, but because, you know, we had to spend down our cash balance in the debt service fund. Fund balances have gotten back to a healthy level, and that's something that we continue to talk about over the course of time to continue to create that financial stability for the last two years. And our revenue by type is something that's typical across the state, that you see a large portion of our revenue comes in from state tuition and then local property tax. Our fund balances as a percent of our expenditure have obviously increased as our fund balances have increased the last two years to get back to a healthy level. And so, again, I provided those snapshots and then provided you the link to be able to go on and look at that. You can see any school corporation across the state of Indiana. And then it kind of aggregates that data down into specific funds as you go down into some of that information. But again, it's the same information that we provide you with on a monthly basis and throughout the year.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Couple of quick questions, Mr. Irwin.
Yeah.
On the, the interest earned from those accounts, first of all, assuming those, the money that that was invested is very safe, is like a savings account or a small CD?
Typically, most of it stays with, with Trust Indiana, but as rates, we had switched over some back over to Peoples in a different place depending on how the rates are during the course of the year. And so we try to be smart about getting the best money for our, the best bang for our buck when our money sits in the bank and they hold on to that, so.
And then that, the interest earned, where does that money get deposited to?
It gets deposited to the, to the account. So that's where that breakdown comes on the interest on investment.
Goes right back into those individual accounts?
It goes into those specific accounts.
Okay. And then the acronym, just for me, for maybe for everybody's information, especially Mr. Demoss, the DOAB, that acronym?
Put me on the spot there.
Distressed Unit Appeals Board.
There you go, yeah.
Distressed Unit Appeals Board?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Demoss.
The Distress Unit Appeals Board is set up to help watch out for school corporations that might be in trouble.
Correct.
And so therefore requiring this information to be presented in this meeting is to help make sure that the Board's, you know, aware and where they can find additional information. So when they, again, they look out, they look at all corporations and try to monitor to make sure if there's any that look like they may be in distress, then they'll, they'll look at them a little deeper.
So they do like an internal audit process?
Yes. They come in, they, and they meet the school corporation, and they start to get into your inner workings to see how things are going because you might, your, your school corporation could be in financial stress.
Right.
And so they come to start to look into how things are operating and make recommendations for changes to make sure that you don't continue down that path.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. There being no more business for the Board of Finance, we'll adjourn the Board of Finance meeting. And then now, we'll begin our second meeting. So I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation Board of Trustees. And for the roll call, let their record reflect that all board members are present. And we, let's see, our first item would be visitor comments. Was there any visitors that checked in, Mr. Irwin?
I do not have any visitor comments.
Are there any visitors? No visitors tonight? All right. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes for the December 21st, 2020 regular board meeting. We have the financial report, which would be the treasurer's report for December of 2020. And Mr. Durnall, if you could read off the claims for us?
The claims for part of the consent agenda would be gross wages for 12-4-2020 for Gross wages, mini payroll for 12-7-2020 for $456.80. Gross wages for payroll on 12-11-2020 for $84,456. For gross wages on 12-18-2020 for $630,248.28. For claims prepay, 12-1 through 12-31 of 2020, $2,524,584.43. For regular vouchers, $119.21, $423,471.31. For claims for sale vouchers, $120 of 2021, $4,177.18. For a grand total of $4,341,340,00, I'm sorry, $633.1.
Thank you, Mr. Durnall. We also have donations. And this month, there is $130 that the Edgewood Junior High School seventh grade team, donation in memory of Madeline Rivera Gill's father, who had passed away. So we appreciate that. There was also a donation from Central Supply Company in the amount of $500, and I believe that was for the Student Assistance Fund. And Central Supply Company reaches out to places where their employees are connected to, either by volunteers or employees. And their employee Drake Walls has, his wife is Maddie Walls, at the Edgewood Primary School as a teacher. And so it was in her honor that they had donated that. There's also a $20 donation from Beverly McGahey. We also have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations D, A through F, and personnel appointments and transfers E, A, and B. So we have a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move approval for A, B, C, D, and E.
I'll second.
You can second it. Any questions or comments? Are there none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, there's been a request to add an agenda item. This would be the school board appointment to the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. It is an action item, so Dr. Sanders, could you cover that for us?
Yes. So every four years, you want me to go ahead and present this now?
Yes.
Okay. Every four years, our school corporation recommends a representative to serve on the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. Christine Harrison, who's a third grade teacher at EIS, has been our appointee for the last four years. And so we need to reappoint her. And apologize we didn't get this on the agenda, but it's important we do this tonight as her term will be ending at the end of January. So I would like to add this item and ask the Board to approve her appointment.
We have a motion.
I move approval.
Okay. I'll second.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we have the Business Manager's Report. Mr. Irwin will go over that for us.
I put those up on your guys' table again, and there's two separate ones. I gave you year end for December to end 2020, and then I gave you our newest projections for 2021. Again, just talking about year end real quick. Education Fund closed out the 2020 year by meeting our goal of ending with one month's operating balance. And, you know, we've, we've come a long way in the last couple of years, and it's, it's great to meet that goal and to have that financial stability for the corporation and the people that, the people that we serve and the community that we, that we have. So that's definitely something that we're very proud of and happy for. And then the Debt Service Fund, we ended the year within appropriation. We did receive our December settlement of property taxes on time, and we paid back the tax anticipation warrant from earlier in the year to the Indiana Bond Bank. We are going to take the, the tax anticipation warrant for 2021 just to keep that safeguard in place for cash-wise, for cash flow. And then the interest, and the interest on the TAW is something that we'd already planned for during the budget process for 2021. The Operations Fund ended the year right there in the range where we had hoped it would, kind of in that range where we kind of want to end every year, is somewhere right there in that, that spectrum there of, in that 1.4 mark. And, and so we're very pleased with our position in that fund and going into 2021. The month of January will be a huge cash flow month for us because it's a three-pay month for us. And so you add that extra, that extra payroll, and then we also pay the full premium on our, on our insurance, liability insurance for the entire year during the month of January. And so that's a big expenditure upfront. And so there's a lot of cash flows in January. And so again, that cash balance is nice to have, knowing that we have all of those things coming up. I did want to spend some time talking about the 2021 projections just because there's a lot in there. Obviously, it's the first one that you guys have seen. But we don't expect to make large cash balances like we have the last two years. That's, that's not an expectation. That's not going to happen unless for some reason our ADM just exploded. But again, we, we don't expect that to happen. We do anticipate a decrease in state tuition support starting in February because of a decline in our special ed grant dollars. And then the likelihood that our February count will be less than it was in September. And that's pretty typical of what happens every single year. And that's pretty typical of what happens across the state because, you know, kids either move, some move in, you have midterm graduates, those sorts of things. So it's pretty typical for your count to go down. And we do expect that to happen on Countdown Day on February 1st. As far as the special ed grant dollars, again, that's pretty typical across the state. Enrollment's been down across the state. And so again, those dollars and those grant dollars are going to go down. And so that's very true for us in that grant. We flatlined projections as far as funding until we have a better idea of where we think, you know, things will be. There's a lot of optimism on that front as far as funding-wise on state legislature with everything that's going on. We've been told that 100% funding for the last part of this school year for the February count is something that will pass, that there's, that they're very certain of that. We're also being told that we think that there's the strong possibility that, that we might see early graduates count towards the February count in the coming future. And so that would be a very positive thing to not have those kids fall off your count. And so we, we just put as much detailed information in there as we could to make sure that these are as accurate as possible. And like we always do, as things come through, as new information comes in, we'll continue to update these to make sure they're as accurate as possible. And currently, one of my goals for this year is to start to work on a three-year project out for those three major funds as well, just to continue to have some of those so that we can look at different possibilities and where that might land us in the future to just, and continue to improve those things, just so that we can continue to plan better moving forward. So as far as cash flows goes, that's what I had. I did want to provide an update on some things with textbook collections. That's something that we've been working on to improve the process on since I had come in. And this wasn't something I'd sent you, but I wanted to make sure we did update you on it. But back in November of 2019, when I had arrived, we started to improve our process for communication and collection of textbook fees because that was something that, that needed to be done. We had a large amount that was still outstanding, and so we needed to work on that process to make sure that we were, that we were revamping that. And so we revamped the payment form, which is posted online under the forms. We created a schedule of dates to send information reminders to family when fees are available or how to apply for textbook assistance, or if they needed to set up a payment plan. And we've collected a large majority of those outstanding unpaid fees dating back to the 18, 19 school year and just improved that process and communication with families. And we're just trying to continue to, to work with our families as much as possible in regards to taking care of them in a timely, timely manner and continuing to evaluate that process to make sure that we're getting information to them and, and when they need it, so that they're not being caught off guard of knowing when those are available to be paid or what it is that they need to do. So I did want to provide a short update on that as well. So, any questions?
Thank you. One, couple of quick questions, Mr. Irwin. Have we, I know last year, approximately this time, we switched to S-Craft with our property liability.
Yeah.
Have we been happy with what they're doing as far as mitigation-type workshop? I know with COVID, it's a problem.
Yeah. And even through that process, they've worked with us with sending out risk, you know, risk management people where they come out and looked across the corporation and looked at our facilities and looked at things that we have going on and say, hey, you could do this differently. You might want to think about this. And so we also have access to the Brit Insurance Platform, which we're hoping to start to take advantage of more and more. Our Transportation Department, it uses it quite a bit. But as far as that training piece with staff, whether it's with slip trips and falls or any other type of staff education piece, that is very easy for record-keeping. It's very easy in a time, time-wise for staff to be able to get a hold of it, and that's something that's free to us. And then the people that we work with through, through S-Craft and Gallagher, they're, they're very easy to get a hold of. They've been very accommodating through different situations, pick up the phone and give them a call and answer a question, and that's been terrific.
And they've helped you through the workers? Have you done the first audit on workers' comp yet? Or they help, or they've been an asset to you, is what I'm asking for?
Yes, they absolutely have been an asset, yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. And as far as, I know last year, we had to prepay the whole year. That's the way it is every year? You can't spread it out over 12 months?
Yeah. They pay, they, you pay all those premiums upfront. It goes into the pool of the trust.
Correct. Okay. I didn't realize it. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Irwin, Dr. Sanders, ending 2020 with one month's worth of reserves was a critical goal that we've had. And especially in these last couple of years, we have really accelerated towards reaching that goal. And so I know there's more than you, there's, there's others out there in the team doing that. But I just did want to thank you guys again for all that hard work to get us where we needed to be. It was very critical we, we got to that level. And so thank you for, for all the hard work to achieve that.
Thank you.
Our next item is an update on our Ready Schools Initiative. Dr. Sanders?
Yes. Our Ready Schools Initiative will literally define our school corporation for the next several years. The 2019, 2020 school year was a pivotal year for RBB as we went through a strategic design process that led to our Ready Schools Implementation Plan. Jamie Miller, Megan Scott, and John Kerr are here tonight to provide the Board with, and the public with, an update on our Ready Schools Initiative. So I'll turn it over to, looks like Jamie's first, so.
Well, good evening. As you guys know, Ready Schools has looked a little different than what we had hoped it would in the first implementation year this year. But we're really, after the fall semester, really devoting the majority of our energy as coaches to the teachers and our students purely for e-learning, we were able to gradually start refocusing on rolling out our Ready Schools Implementation Plan. You may recognize some of the branding from last year. Some of that started really from the stakeholder feedback that came from the Ready Schools process, aligning our identity, our branding, our communication across all of the schools and just really tightening up the way we're communicating and how we're identifying ourselves as a unified district. So that's the first couple of slides there.
You have a handout.
Oh, yes. If you, if everyone have it. So on Slide 3, you'll see an overview of the plan. These first couple of slides should look familiar from last year. These were some of the assets that we used to just start communicating what would have been the initial big rollout of the plan last fall that we're getting back to now. And really, the whole plan revolves around that graduate profile. That's our end game. That's what we're working toward. That's what the rest of our strategies are built around. So that grad profile on Slide 4 is the skill set that we defined with stakeholders, with teachers, administrators, families, that we had planned to get feedback beginning at the beginning of the year on what that looks like as a draft to really firm up the critical thinking, compassion, everything you see in that colored graphic there. And the three pillars that we intend to do so through are innovative teaching and learning, career awareness and readiness, and family and community engagement. And we built those around the core tenets of Ready Schools as a program. If you remember, Ready Schools wasn't designed by us, but it was part of the discovery framework through ROI, Regional Opportunity Initiatives, who fielded the grant that we went through with the year-long planning process. So those three pillars were kind of our way of taking the six tenets of Ready Schools and making it our own and designing those strategies around what our community needed and what we wanted to see in our students. So the first pillar, innovative teaching and learning, John Kerr's going to share a little bit about what those strategies have started to look like this year. And then we'll just go through each of the three pillars to give you kind of strategy by strategy updates on what we've been able to accomplish this year through the first part of implementation.
So to start us off, one of the main things is, is starting to really get going now is our professional learning communities. And so in the fall, the administrators started meeting with the Solution Tree Consultant and trying to do that needs assessment for what each building needed. And then now, that process is transferring into the leadership teams at each building, where that same Solution Tree Consultant is going to start working with those teams to kind of help advise them and finish off the needs assessment and then, and take it to those next steps. And the hope of all of that is to help us start using student assessments and data to start increasing that development there for the students, but then also to supplement the teachers with the professional development, development necessary to be successful in these PLC teams. So Megan, we'll now start talking about the fun stuff.
It is, it is fun. Another couple of the segments of pillar one are the digital design and fabrication, video production, and our collaborative learning environments. And that is one I'm going to talk with you about next. The first slide on, Slide number seven, shows our junior high fabrication lab, and it has reached almost completion, which is really exciting. We are looking for construction to be completed this month and furniture to be delivered next month. And we have already started conversations with teachers and training with teachers for how we can use this space to purposefully integrate with their curriculum, hopefully by the end of this, this semester. There is a blueprint of some of the things that you can see that the students will be able to engage with down at the bottom for both digital design and creation, as well as their collaboration on kind of a clean side and a messy side of that fabrication lab. We also have partnered with, through ROI, with a company called DevX that is helping us with our curriculum development for this space, which is, I know, one of the pieces I am most excited about as a teacher and as a coach, that we're not building these spaces in isolation and just kind of build it and hope they will come. But we are doing very purposeful work to make sure that our teachers know how to use this space, that they have guidance on how to use it, they have coaching through it, and that the students are able to really purposefully use it as part of their standards-based curriculum that they are working to throughout the year. So really tying into our PBL that we have been doing for the past several years and building upon that. It is not something that is just completely new and fresh. It's building upon that foundation with a lot of new, exciting engagements for our students and teachers. And then on Slide 10 is our audiovisual production. And we are doing a lot of work at the junior high with this right now with both equipment purchases as well as curriculum changes, looking at how we can build out that program, again, with a lot of purpose, building upon the media production that is already in place there with our courses to make it more tied into this career readiness goal of ours as well. So you can see that we are partnering with WTIU to get their guidance on what students can be able to do and create even within their, their school walls, and then also taking that out into some field work as well. We are hoping to expand this program to EIS and EHS in the following year as well. And I think that Ms. Miller is going to be back to talk about it.
All right. And then Slide 11 you'll see is the last part of that first pillar. Our media centers in all four schools. This is a really exciting piece. Something that we really took away from the discovery process last year was the site visits, being able to go to other schools and other learning centers, places where they had really redefined what learning looked like in these spaces to not only excite students and teachers, but in a lot of cases, to mirror what these spaces, how they resembled various workplaces and what students would be able to anticipate experiencing out in higher education and then in career places or places of work after graduation. So revamping our spaces is something that we've been able to start thinking about even during these times when we can't necessarily make major overhauls to curriculum or be in the classroom as coaches. This is something we've kind of been able to keep pouring into at the pace that we had intended behind the scenes, so to speak. So in all four schools, we've started having the conversations with leadership teams So in all four schools, we've started having the conversations with leadership teams about how to revamp the media centers and capitalize on the things that are in place that are working and that are going well, but then give a little bit of a facelift to each of those spaces. So whether that's Lego wall or a puppet theater at the primary level where students can create and learn and demonstrate their learning in creative tactile hands-on ways, or all the way up then through the media center at the high school where that will look like a coffee house and a student-run enterprise that I'll talk about in a second. But each of those plans in each of the schools is, they're relatively low-cost facelifts, if you will, of the media centers to just be really intentional about how we're fostering collaboration and critical thinking and creativity, all of those skills that are built into the graduate profile. So with that, the second pillar, starting with Slide 12, career awareness and readiness, this is really something that we're just infusing into all of the curriculum, all of the instruction, student learning, student experiences that are all in place. So just adding that extra layer of career awareness so that students, excuse me, at every level, beginning again in the primary grades all the way up through high school, start to recognize and understand what these skills and what different content areas look like and how they tie to careers and what that looks like for them, so that they recognize, I've joked and used the example several times, that if Ms. Ciliacs at the primary school can talk about architecture and what it looks like to be an architect with her e-learning lesson for kindergartners, for K-5 kids no less, then anyone can be making career connections because she's talking about if you're interested in this, or if you think that this would be an exciting job, then you could do that. And that, it obviously looks different as you go up through the grade levels and you start to think about how a Project Lead the Way course could lead to a particular career path after graduation, and whether that means you need a four-year degree or you could go right into industry. Just making those connections for students. Some of the ways that that looks is whether during COVID we're creating video resources or tying them into virtual connections with the success school, with the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, whatever we can do right now to start to build those stair steps toward creating those connections for students, then it'll be that much easier of a transition when we start to continue to reinforce those career opportunities in more of the face-to-face experiences, getting our students out into places of industry more often, being able to take our educators even on-site visits, the type of things that we've built into the budget but just haven't been able to do this year due to COVID. So, when you get to Slide 13, you can see one of the examples of a way that we've sort of been able to pivot in the face of COVID with what was an existing strategy, rather than hosting an in-person open house night for eighth graders to be able to start to learn about the different high school courses. The counselors took a different approach and encouraged teachers and departments to create videos. So as coaches, we started with the Project Lead the Way courses and tried to encourage our students to help create that content and share the things about those Project Lead the Way, those STEM-aligned courses, what they enjoyed and what, how those different courses could tie to their future endeavors, so that then that's something now that we can just continue to build on and build that content, so it doesn't have to be a one-night event, but something that we can share on our website, to share with families. So, in some ways, some positives have come of some of the changes that COVID has necessitated. We'll have that video content and the strategy that we can just keep building on. Digital portfolios is something else that we're building out with students as a way to archive and artifact their learning, and so we're starting with the interns in ways where we can't necessarily have as many face-to-face conversations with those hosts. The students are starting to use Google Sites to build out a portfolio of what that internship experience looks like. So all just things that we'll be able to use this experience this year as a way to learn and grow and just improve on the strategies that we thought we had in place at the start of this whole COVID time of year. And then Slide 14, I alluded to the coffee house at the high school. That'll be the first, what we hope will be our first student-run business, that the students will be able to plan from the very beginning, design, and then ultimately run as a revenue-building endeavor right here during the school day. So that'll be part of the renovation plan for the media center at the high school, and a neat way that we think will incorporate even more students is to get different departments at the high school involved. So whether the art classes are designing the initial physical structure of the coffee house, or the business department has students that are planning the business plan for what that model will look like, the food services element with the fax classes, just getting as many students engaged in that operation as we can. And then the final pillar, Slides 15 and 16, communication was a huge strategy that we heard from stakeholders, that we wanted to streamline and just increase consistency was really the biggest thing that we heard from stakeholders, was more consistent communication across all four schools, district-wide. So COVID has obviously added some new elements to that, but on the Ready Schools Implementation side, the Innovative Learning Center is one piece of that that we're really excited to be able to plan for, to engage our families and community members and industry partners all within that space. So, as you flip ahead to Slide 17, you'll start, you'll see the initial blueprint, the layout of that Innovative Learning Center, and how some of those spaces will be used, really building on the space that's just being finished up at the junior high right now, and just adding another layer. So we've talked about, starting with our STEAM initiative years ago, and now just continuing to build on that foundation. Similarly, the Innovative Learning Center, two out of those four spaces there, the clean, what are labeled as clean and dirty digital fab labs, will be really similar in function to what we're putting in place at the junior high now, just then with the added elements with the digital video studio, as well as the Career Readiness Center, where we'll be able to have community partners, families, like I said, invited into that space for students to practice all of those grad profile skills, from presentations to collaboration and so on. So, what questions do you have? Those are the three pillars and all of the strategies there.
How do you do it all, my question? What a wonderful presentation, thank you.
You know, I want you, Board, if you could, look at Slide 17 again.
I'm sure it's over here, right?
Yes, well, that's where it's going to be.
That's the game plan.
But what I want you to notice is, with the STEAM lab at the junior high and the new addition, in this Innovative Learning Center, it is not something like where we're going to build it and hope they come. We are working very hard to maximize these facilities, and if you'll pay attention to Slide 17, you can see how we've tried very hard to align the Ready Schools Initiative with the use of these facilities. And so, a key part of that is really our Ready Schools coaches, John, Jamie, and Megan, who will be working with the teachers and supporting them and helping them to understand how they could utilize these facilities to enhance their instruction. And I'm so excited about our future, just kind of hearing that presentation and just thinking, this is not a one-and-done program, this is long-term. And one of the reasons why I wanted them to come tonight is I want to really try very hard to help our community or help our parents to understand exactly what Ready Schools is all about. And so, yes, our number-one priority is to share that information with all of you tonight, but we also hope that it's another step in sharing with the community, and hopefully those who are watching through cats will be able to learn a little bit more about the Ready Schools Initiative. We are also, we're taking a show on the road, in that we are going to, Jamie and I are going to present, and John and Megan are welcome to join, but we are scheduled to make a presentation to the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce on February 11th, and we're going to attend the Ellisville Town Council Meeting on February 8th to also give a similar presentation, just as another step to share that information. The whole community really needs to understand and buy into what we're doing here. We have to get the word out, so we're trying to exercise every opportunity that we can. But yeah, any other questions for Jamie and Megan and John?
I just, to echo what they were saying, it's amazing what you guys are accomplishing, it's an amazing team that we've got here.
It's been going on for three years.
Yeah, and, well, the one thing, it's so exciting, and I'm so excited to see how it moves forward. I constantly run into the question of how do you schedule, especially at the secondary level, how do you schedule students' time so that they can take advantage of all of these opportunities? And I'm not asking you to answer that question right now, but as the program develops, I would love to be involved and informed about how that is happening, because that's just been something that has been an obstacle to a lot of the reform and innovation that I tried to participate in during my career, and so I'm really interested in seeing how that goes forward, so.
It's not only awesome in what you're doing, but it's awesome in that you're getting the word out, you know, getting to the Chamber of Commerce, getting to the town council. You know, so many times we think we were doing so many wonderful things that nobody knows about, so getting the word out is critical. You know, and just like we had achieved our financial goals, this is another major goal that the Board has had and that I have had, is that Edgewood needs to be the place where students want to go no matter where their future lies, and getting them the exposure in all these different fields, you know, digital design, you run a CNC machine, I mean, it's amazing. And to think we, you know, I don't want to take our focus off either of what we do to get students ready for college paths as well, and my daughter went into IU with almost a sophomore because of all of that, and I just hope that we can get all of that information out. What we're doing, preparing our students for whatever pathway there is, whether it's career, whether it's further education, whatever that is, we're there supporting them and preparing them for that next step. So what you guys are doing is so important. Back when I ran the first time, a community member, Mr. Dale Connor, he's passed away, but he had told me that he thought that the schools could do a better job of getting students prepared who aren't maybe going to college, that are doing, basically, he said, you know, may go out and drive a dump truck, what are you doing for them? And I think we are getting there, have gotten there, that we are preparing these students for whatever lies ahead of them. So, thank you so much, and it's your guys' enthusiasm that makes this infectious to the rest of the teaching community and to our overall community. So appreciate so much the hard work you guys have put in on this. It has come a long way from when we talked some years ago about STEM and then changed it to STEAM and then now this Ready Schools. It's just awe-inspiring how far you guys have taken this, so thank you so much.
I was just going to, yeah, kind of add on to what you were saying, is I think what's going to be neat about this is I can see my own child in these spaces and how excited, you know, that they are going to be with this. This is, it's amazing, and I can just see the excitement in these kids, and what does this do, and how does this work? And, you know, you can just feel it, and so that's so exciting. This is really, really great work, great work.
Nice one, thank you as well. I do have one quick question, Ms. Miller. I think it was about a year ago, or maybe May, maybe my very first school board meeting, May of 19, we voted to purchase a software package that was going to be used K-12, I think, I think it's called Naviance.
Naviance.
Naviance, and this is going to help pull this together as well. And I know there's an annual subscription, so are we utilizing that yet, or is it coming? Is it as good as you thought it was going to be?
I think it can be as good as we thought it would be, yeah. That's one of those things that we're still going through quite a bit of training, actually, the counselors especially, trying to onboard, forgive the mess, and it does still have a lot of potential. Have we fully utilized it yet? No, it's, we still have room to grow into it, which I think is a good thing. It integrates really easily with Clever and a lot of our other software. We just have to continue growing into it, especially in the midst of COVID and e-learning and schedule changes. It has a whole element called, I think it's something, Road Trip Nation, something like that, and it's one of those whole video series with career connections that we've been able to start utilizing a little bit. And sort of to speak to Mr. Demoss's question, it's a great example of being able to push elements of it into existing courses and into existing content, where we can't necessarily expect teachers to pull one more chunk of time out to devote to Naviance. We're able to pull elements of it and apply those in existing contexts to try to just augment the instruction that's already happening in, say, a business or a preparing-for-college and careers course, or internships even. So it has some really great elements that we've been able to utilize. We're still learning all of the features and the different elements of it.
Okay, yeah, I know that kind of tidied up to your Pillar 2, and then I didn't know if that was going to be part of their portfolio.
Yes.
As they become graduates, I thought that was kind of the game plan.
It does, it has elements of that, yeah.
Right, it's just a matter of pulling it together, right?
Yes, absolutely. It has, those are some of the features that we haven't really even allowed it to stretch its wings yet, so to speak, those portfolio elements that can track and stay with the students. Right now, we're using some of our existing Google Suite features like Google Sites to try and practice kind of the pedagogy side of the portfolios, and as soon as we understand what we want out of a portfolio, hopefully we'll be able to use some of those more technical features of Naviance, yeah.
Okay, and in reference to Mr. Demoss's question, I assume that was part of it at the high school level, is you're going to pull the classroom teachers, let them utilize that for different teaching methodology and so forth, that's part of the professional learning community, right?
Yes, frankly, not having our Wednesday mornings has been one of the biggest blows to being able to build up those pieces, because we just haven't been able to put those professional learning pieces in place with the teachers, to onboard them to some of those elements of things like Naviance. So when we're able to revisit the professional learning and get our teachers familiar, there's only so much the three of us can share and push out to them. Everything we share as coaches right now has to be pretty turnkey, right? Because they have to be able to import it into their LMS or, you know, automatically upload it and share it with the kids, otherwise we just don't have the capacity to be learning new things while teaching, you know, virtual and in-person and all of the above that I know you all know. So, as soon as we can get back to our more robust system in place for professional learning, I think that's when we'll be able to gain some more confidence and momentum with the newer pieces like Naviance that really just take some time to acclimate to.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Thanks for sharing it with the local chamber, and I do challenge you to maybe receive it a little bit further, maybe the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and pull them out this way, and the redevelopment commission, you've already shared with them, I appreciate that, so thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is consideration of a resolution for the transfer amount from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund, and so, Mr. Irwin?
Something a little bit less exciting than what you guys just have talked about. This is a resolution that we need to do every year, that just sets forth an up-to amount of what we would transfer from Education Fund to the Operations Fund. The state sets a threshold of 15% of all revenue to the Education Fund that can be transferred to Operations. We are well below that threshold. We're at, during 2020, we transferred 11.9% is what we transferred. A lot of school corporations that end up, well, the school corporations that end up going over 15%, they kind of get put on a list from the IDOE where there's certain parameters and reports that they have to do to find out why they're doing that. A lot of times, school corporations are put in that position because of property tax cap losses that might make them have to move more money to support that fund. And obviously, we're not in a position that we need to do that, and so we don't transfer that amount. Like I said, during 2020 was 11.9%. The amount that I listed on the resolution, again, isn't up to, that's not what we plan to transfer over. We plan to be right there, about the amount that we did last year, it will be pretty close to the same amount, and so this is just, the up-to reason is not to set an exact so that if for something happened and we needed to go $5 above that, we would be coming back and doing this very same thing, and so we same thing. And so we just set that up to amount so that we can do this one time. And again, the transfers are something, again, that you see every single month in the cash flows that we provide you. So I recommend your approval.
I make motion to approve the resolution to transfer the, the amount from education to operation fund?
I'll second.
Is that 2.7? Is that 15? Is that 15%?
That would be my estimation of the two, would be my estimation of about what 15% would be. But, you know, depending on, you know, where our student count goes or different things like that, that, that number could change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And on your projections for 20, 2021, you actually have $190,000 for, for the year, so.
Yeah.
So obviously underneath.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next is permission to void corporation and/or ECA checks that are older than two years as of December 31st of 2020. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is just a yearly ask of the board, and this just follows the board policy that we have that says that as of December 31st of every single year, checks that are two years or older would be voided. And so we are just asking your permission to continue to follow that board policy and void those checks. And again, that was something that we provided you a list of all of those checks that would be voided in your package. So I ask for your approval.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, since we added something, we'll combine the next, these next two. So consideration to approve the 2021 to 2022 official school calendar and also the tentative calendar for 2022 to 2023. Dr. Sanders?
Yes. So I'm asking the board to approve the 2020, 21, 2020, 22 calendar as the official school calendar. And then the 22, 23 calendar, as you just said, as a tentative calendar. The, some changes for the 21, 22 calendar. It does start a week later from this current calendar, although we started later because of a response to COVID. But it does start a week later. And another change is, this year, we, we tried an idea, we tried to move the records day that's usually the first day back in January, tried to move that to the beginning of the school year so that teachers could have two days before the start of the school year. Anymore, there are so many required trainings that teachers have to, to go through. We, we've, we worry about giving them enough time to prepare their classrooms. So we moved, the idea was to move that date to August and give them two days. But we found out by practice that when we started this second semester, the teachers and administrators really did need that day in January to get ready for the second semester. So we went back to the, the traditional way that we've, we've handled those record days. And then we are adding two days, two e-learning days into the, the month of September for parent teacher conferences. Those had to be canceled this year because of COVID, but we want to try that again next year. And then commencement is June 4th. So we've had these calendars presented to our administrators and our teachers. We, we've listened to their insights and, and so we recommend your approval of these two calendars.
I move approval. A second.
Do you have a second? Any questions, comments?
I just, the, the, that, that one day at the beginning of the school year versus the day in the middle of the school year, it would be nice if we could figure out a way to get another day.
Right.
And I always offered previous superintendents to pay the teachers an extra half percent, maybe we could get that other day. But I'm not sure where that money comes from. And sitting on this side of the table is a little bit different.
Any further questions, comments? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is consideration to award construction contracts. We have two, the new addition, or new administration service building, and the other is for the Edgewood High School pool renovations. So, Dr. Sanders?
Yes. So I'm asking the board to award the following bids for Building Associates Incorporated. They were the lowest bidder for the new administrative support services building project. And I, you should have a handout with a drawing and floor plan for this, the new administration building, the renovations to the service center, and also the bus, we'll have a new bus lot, new, expanding the, the number of spaces in the bus lot. And so you have that to look at tonight. And also for J.C. Ripberger Construction, they were the lowest bidder for the Edgewood High School pool renovation. The recommendation from VPS Architecture and the bid tabulation sheets are, were included in the board packet. We had an excellent response to the bid process, and that always helps with the end result. George Link from VPS is here tonight. I, I welcome him to share any additional information and to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders.
I'm gonna pull this down. As Dr. Sanders said, December 12th, we did open, receive and open bids for the two projects. On the administration services project, we had four, total of 14 bids. And on the pool project, we had a total of six bids. To be honest with you, I've been doing this for 30 years. I don't think I've ever, a project this size had 14 bids on it before. So there was a lot of interest in the project. There are two actions that we need tonight. One is the board needs to reject the bid from Harmon Construction for non-compliance with the bidding documents. They did not submit all the proper paperwork and acknowledgement in their bid. And they were low bid, but they did not follow the bid guidelines on it. So we would need the board to take action to reject that bid and then take action to award the administrative project to Building Associates for a total of $3,339,000. And for J.C. Ripberger at the pool for a total of $1,592,800. And what Harmon was missing is Form 96, which is required in public bid projects, their financial statement, they are missing their drug testing policy, and they did not acknowledge a receipt of any of the addendums that were issued during the project. They did, they did send them to me about two and a half hours later, but as I told them, I said, you know, sorry, there, there's a bid day and time for a reason.
Since there's three different ones, why don't we go ahead and open it up for questions and comments first, and then we'll take each of them individually. Any questions or comments?
I just had a couple of quick questions, Mr. Link. On the, I mean, thanks for the drawing. It helps me visualize this tremendously. The, the total square footage of the, the new administration building, ballpark, I, I don't, I'm trying to visualize, I'm not sure how to read his drawing.
Including the basement, give me just a minute.
There's a basement?
I've got just my eyes here.
So that's where Dr. Sanders' office would be?
It's, including the basement, it's just under 10,000 square feet.
Okay, count in the basement?
Yeah.
Okay, then, I'm, I'm just curious, behind, on the third page, behind all this, is that the existing parking lot? Are we gonna really expand it? Because that's, it's, it's a mess already.
We're totally reorganizing it, and that is scheduled to happen this summer.
Okay, so, so I assume Dr. Sanders, all the parking, right in front of the pool for trailers and all that's gonna be behind now, the service center, correct?
Yes.
Is that the game plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't want to have to use that?
Yes. We, we've got space in there. Now, that's not to say that somewhere down the road, you might have to push those trailers back out again for buses. But right now, we've, we've accommodated everything that we know of today. But that's, you know, depending on how bus routes go, you could end up pushing those back out. But yes, we, we have made space for those.
And that site, that site behind there will accommodate all that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right.
And Dr. Sanders?
It's not just the administration building. We're also adding on bays for bus service, bus maintenance there, as you'll see. And then also another small storage building as part of that whole construction project.
And part of this may be for the alternative school, is that correct?
Well, yes. We, we're going to have, it'll go into the paper, I think, tomorrow, maybe, that we would like to have a work session next week.
Okay.
To talk about this idea, all the projects, but we want to talk specifically about the idea of moving the edge, the alternative school, and utilizing some of the space of the current admin building. And, and refurbishing that, taking advantage of that opportunity to make better use of that space once the new admin building is built.
Is this all part of the, is this all part of the, the vote tonight, the new administration service? But we're voting on this in one combined package, right?
On all of this, what we're talking about there, about moving the edge, that would be part of the, the next project that we're working on.
Okay, but the service center remodel is part of this project?
Only to the extent that it was required for maintenance and transportation. So it was very minimal right now, because we weren't sure where the edge was going to land. So, so right now, if we did nothing more beyond this project right here, there would be some minimal renovations to the transportation and maintenance end of the building, a new roof put on it, and then the offices would sit empty.
But all the site preparation is part of this bid?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and in behind, all the parking, okay.
Yes, 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 yes.
This includes the innovation center?
No, it does not.
No, that's, that's totally different.
Any further questions?
I'm done. I, on the drawing, the, the pink part of the current building, is that the part that is not being, nothing's being done to that?
Yes, yeah, the pink part, yes. That, that's the existing building. There's a little bit down on the end where maintenance is right now. We're adding, I think, cutting a doorway into the, the kitchenette down on that end over by the boardroom to
Right.
make it more usable for that group.
Okay. But the, what's marked is transportation, that would be what is currently there, just it's being?
No, no, that's all new square footage.
That's new, okay.
Oh, that's new square.
Anything in the purple is all new square footage.
Gotcha. Okay. Including the parking lot?
Yes, including the parking lot.
Okay, got you. Got you. Okay.
You can see the building would be wider than before because of the length of the buses.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Get them through there.
We have the boardroom over there, too.
Boardroom, I think the boardroom's gonna be in the basement. Now, there's a really nice community over there. Any other questions? All right, so we have three action items for this then. The first would be to reject the Harmon Construction.
Harmon.
Construction bid because it failed to meet all of the bid requirements. So we have a motion for that.
I will move to reject the Harmon Construction bid for non-adpliance.
I'll second.
You can second?
Was that, I assume all this was, by rejecting, that this is all run by our legal counsel and this is all?
We have not run that by the legal counsel, but that's, it's pretty standard procedure. If they don't comply.
This is protocol, okay, okay.
Our legal counsel's getting with them, so.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, all right.
I didn't feel that was actually necessary, having that they did not comply.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our next act, action item would be for awarding the new administration service building to, contract to Building Associates. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, for $3,339,000.
Correct.
We have a motion for that?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
You can second it? Any further questions or comments on that project? There are none. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now, our last one in this area would be the educate, Edgewood High School pool renovations. We're the contract to J.C. Ripberger Construction Company for the amount of $1,592,800. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any further questions, comments?
I just got one quick question on the pool. The, we're, we're not changing the face print of the size. Were we doing the internal, the guts of it?
The, yes, the guts of it. And we're doing some ADA upgrades to the locker rooms. We're taking the gang showers, making them individual shower stalls, re-tiling some areas in there, refurbishing the bulkhead that's due for that. Because the bulk of it, and the HVAC, sorry, I almost forgot that, HVAC. So it's, it's, the bulk of that money is in the mechanical systems.
Okay, the fenced in area will remain intact or is that going to be covered?
Remains intact.
Okay, all right.
When you say re-tiling, is that the tile in the pool or?
No, it's the pool deck.
Pool deck, okay.
There's, there is some patching that goes on in the pool. There's some tile that's missing, and there's a patching call out to be done in there.
So I think, I know we had some problems with the ceilings many years ago. I believe that's all been fixed.
I'm not aware of any issues with the ceiling in there. It actually looks pretty dang good.
Okay, well, I, I know at one point we had some pieces fall into the pool. So I hoped that it'd gotten taken care of. When I swam, I didn't have anything falling on my head, so I guess we're okay. Okay.
Any further questions, comments? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Safe travels.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Okay. Our next item is consideration to approve the purchase of two 78-passenger buses. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so these are the two buses that we had scheduled in the bus replacement plan that you guys had approved during the budgeting process. And so we were ready to move forward with that. These two buses will replace two, two buses that are, are pretty old, 17 years old. And so we're, we're replacing, we're buying outright, not leasing. And again, this is set forth by the bus replacement plan that you guys had approved during the budgeting process. And so we're just ready to move forward with that. It takes some time for those buses to come in, as with anything logistically right now. It takes a while. And so we want to move forward with that now so that we can get those in in a timely fashion. So I recommend your approval, please.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions, comments?
How does this compare to what was budgeted?
It actually turned out a little bit better. And so I know when, when we, we estimate those, those numbers, we obviously are gonna estimate a little bit high because you don't want to be short on that. So, but it did come in a little bit shy of the number that we had estimated. So we were pleased with that number.
Sure, good.
Might help, I appreciate you sharing with me how the bidding process worked the other day on this. We do, through the, through the co-op, maybe you might help, maybe for Mr. Demoss's and maybe Ms. Jacobs' knowledge levels, we're new, newer.
Yeah.
How that works. I appreciate that. I didn't know that's how it worked.
The service center helps with the competitive bidding process, and they help source those quotes. And so we pull in those quotes to make sure that we're obviously getting a responsible quote on the buses. And then we have the option of looking at whether or not you want a gas, you know, a gas bus, a propane bus. I didn't even realize for a while, learning about different, different tech, you know, electric buses, all the different options, and making sure that we were getting what was best for the corporation and a responsible price, you know?
And I think at one point, we did, did we do an extended warranty on a bus a few years back?
Yeah, some of the previous buses that had been bought a few years ago, were not bought with a warranty on certain items. And we are purchasing a warranty on some of those things.
Okay.
To make sure to safeguard, you know, every once in a while, you make To make sure to safeguard, you know, every once in a while, you may get something that's newer, that has a big fix on it, and that's happened with one of those buses that didn't have that warranty on it, and there was a fix of close to ten grand that happened on one of those buses. And so we are purchasing a warranty with those buses, yes.
Okay.
Further questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Now, we have the consideration to approve the EECC rates for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, you know, the Edgewood Early Childhood Center is in very good hands with our director, Matt Wooden. He is not only leading, leading the charge with our paths to quality efforts, but he really studies not only the product, the, the service that we're providing our families, but he, he is a great administrator, paying attention to the financial aspects of the whole process, and Matt regularly meets with Matt Irwin and I to discuss the finances, to make sure that we're planning ahead, and so I asked Matt to actually be the one to share this proposal to you tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Sanders, thank you, board. What I'm proposing for this coming school year is a tuition increase for both our half-day and our full-day preschool classes. Our current tuition rate, our daily rate for half-day classes is twelve dollars and fifty cents a day, and I'm proposing a rate increase to fifteen dollars a day. Our current full-day rate is twenty-five dollars a day, and I'm proposing a rate increase to twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents a day. In the information I provided for you previously, you'll, you'll see that this is well below the market rate for a past quality Level III licensed center in Monroe County. The market rate, as determined by the state of Indiana, for a Level III licensed center is fifty-two dollars a day. Of course, that, that doesn't mean that's where we should be or need to be. That's the, that going rate there are both childcare and preschool facilities that are well above and well below that mark. Our most comparable school in the area would be the school-based preschool programs at MCCSC, which charge a daily tuition rate of thirty-two dollars for full day. So an increase to twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for full day and fifteen dollars for half-day keeps us well under market rate and also keeps us very competitive, keeps us in a, in a good standing in relation to, to other school corporations in the area. Past quality Level III, of course, comes with expenses, and the most predominant of which for us over the coming years is going to be to maintain the curriculum that we're required to provide, both the curriculum itself and the supplies that it'll require to implement that curriculum with fidelity. And so the, that's my primary justification for continuing to consider tuition increases. But it also, a tuition increase also reflects the growing quality of our program in the area. So invite any questions that you might have, and I recommend this rate increase for your approval.
We have a motion?
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Move and second. Okay, any questions?
I just had a couple. Mr. Wood, just, just help me understand, what is the, the starting age for our preschool?
Currently, students need to be three years old at the start of the school year.
Okay, so we have three to five, three to?
Yes.
Okay. And I, help me understand this. I assume that there's ways, with a family can't afford that, there's, there's programs to help with this?
So a, a big part of our Level III past quality advancement is our participation in On My Way Pre-K. On My Way Pre-K is a state-funded program for students who are entering kindergarten. So our families who are, whose students are four at the start of the school year, and whose intent it is to start kindergarten the following school year, funding is available for families that meet financial eligibility requirements set by the, by the state. We currently have two students enrolled using On My Way Pre-K vouchers, and as we increase our capacity in this coming school year with our new facility, I anticipate a greater number of families who can take advantage of that financial assistance.
Okay, and as, as far as our, do we have open slots right now, as of today? Are we, are we full?
We could take some pre-K students in our, our part-time classes. We have a class that offers two-day-a-week preschool seats that we could, we could accept enrollment at this time. Our other classes are full.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good thing we're building the pre-K onto the, the primary school. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now it's time for our monthly update on the RBB response to COVID-19. Dr. Sanders?
Right, so we do not have any changes to, to bring to you tonight for your approval, but I want, I thought it'd be a good idea to just kind of do a review and look back and see what we've done in our response to COVID-19 over the last several months. We are coming up to March 12th, when I believe it, it all started in terms of COVID really impacting our community and our school corporation. And so I put together this summary, and as I did, and I hope as you look through it, that you'll be very proud of our, our effort. And if, if I could name every person who has really gone above the call of duty over the last year, it would be a very long list. And so I just wanted to share with you and the public, and kind of go back and kind of look at, at all that RBB has done in our response to COVID. I'm very proud of our efforts. First, I just wanted to share the different schedules that we've had this year for the in-person students. You know, we started the school year with the hybrid, which provided our students and staff with a sense of safety as we began a school year in the middle of a pandemic. But we learned that students struggled with learning new content because of the limited time with their classroom teachers. So with every schedule that we've implemented, there, it served a purpose at the time. And with every schedule that we've, we've implemented, there are positives and there are negatives. And we've tried to learn this school year about the different schedules that we, we've implemented, and you have to remember that we have really, and we're still doing it, we're building the airplane while we're flying it. There has been, nowhere in our education or in our experience, nothing has, has prepared us for what we've had to, to deal with over the last several months. And, and I know each of these schedules are not perfect. We went to the four-one schedule because we wanted, at the time, we, we knew our students were struggling with the new content, and so we wanted to bring our students back to school and maximize their face-to-face time with their teachers. But in the month of November, we, of course, we had a surge in the community of positive cases, and we really discovered that with the contact, contact tracing protocol, that we were quarantining so many more students than, than was really beneficial to our students and to our families. And so it all came to a head, as we know, on November 22nd, and we went to e-learning for a month, and nobody wanted to do that. But we did so. We made those tough decisions because we thought that was the, the right thing to do for the safety of our students and our staff. But once again, we know, and everybody knows, that face-to-face instruction on any given day is so much better than, than e-learning. And our teachers have been doing amazing work for e-learning, and our, our students and our, our parents have worked hard to, to support that. But we, we really, you know, the whole time we were doing e-learning, I was trying to think, how can we get the kids back in school? And I, I remember I spent one weekend, I just said to myself that, listen, we, how can we get the kids back at school and maximize that face-to-face instruction? And what did we learn from the hybrid when we did that, that we could make some adjustments, so we could get the kids more face-to-face time? And that's when we came up with the revised schedule. And, and that's what we're doing right now for the junior high and the high school. And I've heard some very good comments about the new schedule. It is a little confusing, and it is a burden on, on parents to some degree, but it maximizes that student-to-teacher face-to-face contact. And as you know, for a group, let's, let's say the blue team, where they will be in, in school on one day, the very next day, they're doing the e-learning. And so that, that next day when they're doing e-learning, that's so much more meaningful, it's so much more beneficial, because it's supporting the previous day's instruction. There's a lot more purpose to it. And the four-one schedule that we've continued at the elementary school has been, I've heard really good results from our, our teachers on that, too. So we, we've continued with the four-one schedule at the elementary level. Now, the goal is always to get the kids back in school as much as possible. It's working very well with the, the hybrid, revised hybrid right now. As I mentioned in some of my emails that I've sent out to parents, and you've received some of those emails, I've tried to point out that when we had, at the junior high and high school level, when we had everybody here, if there was a positive case, our, our principals have done an amazing job to immediately do the contact tracing protocol. But we would end up having to send twenty-five to thirty students home for every positive case. And as you could, you've noticed lately with the revised hybrid schedule, that's down to three or four students per positive case. And so we've been very helped, very pleased with, with that schedule. How long will we do this? You know, that's really determined by our situation in our community. So we're continually monitoring that. We're, we want to, if we move back to more full-time instruction, we want to have the confidence that we could do that in a way that we won't get, be right back into sending twenty-five to thirty students home with every positive case. The virtual academy, our, our virtual teachers have done a good job this year. I, I won't go through every bullet item here, but the teachers, the virtual teachers have been working with our students. Now, these are all students who are all virtual, so they don't come to school at all. It's all delivered, a K-5 delivered by the virtual teacher, and at grade six through twelve, they use the Apex program, but it's supported by an RBB teacher who monitors their progress. And I put in the report to show that at the beginning of the first semester, we had three hundred and eighty-one students in all-virtual program, and the second semester, it's three hundred and twenty-eight. The safety measures that have been in place all year with the facial coverings, the desk shields, the sanitizers, you know, when I mentioned, there's so many people to thank, you know, our bus drivers who sanitize their buses between routes, and our custodians who are putting in the extra effort for the deep cleaning. The schools have implemented, implemented very innovative safety procedures in the hallways and the cafeterias to keep everybody safe, and, and I mentioned the contact tracing. Our nutrition services, I could talk about this all day. Vicki Coffey and her team, who's, since last March, have been making sure that students have healthy meals available to them, and that's changed with the, with the changing situation and the changing schedule. Each time, nutrition services have adapted to that, and made sure that a student who was maybe in the all-virtual academy, so they're not coming to school at all, that they would have an opportunity to get meals for, for five days. Or when we were on a hybrid schedule, that the students could come in and get meals for three days, or, or two days, depending on their situation. So they have been just doing an outstanding job. Rick Rotten, his, his technology team, you can see his report here. He shares, and this all came from Rick, the, the hotspots, we issued fifty-four hotspots, and the average monthly data used per device is sixty gigabytes. Frankly, I do not know exactly what that means, but it sounds very impressive. But this has really been helpful, the hotspots, and then we've taken our Chromebooks at the elementary school and loaned those out to students who didn't have devices. And, and then, once again, just a pat on the back to Rick, and the way he has it organized for parents and students and staff to submit tickets, to make that, and there are always going to be, everybody knows, we have, technology's great, but we always run into issues from time to time, and, but he has a system up where it really expedites the process whenever a family needs a Chromebook looked at. And then I'm going to turn it over to Matt at this time, who's going to talk a little bit about the financial aspects of, of our response.
Yeah, just to highlight over some of the things that we've done. I know, Mr. Tucker, you've asked about the CARES Act funds and how that works, and so that was something that, as, as comes to us through reimbursement, once we submit that, and that's something that, that, those funds are largely being used to support the virtual school and the staff and the supplies and the things needed to, to make that happen when we pulled that together, you know, pretty quickly. We've been lucky enough to have a lot of gracious donors, and as you've seen over past board meetings, and things that have been given to us, whether it's, it's large quantities, you know, from whether it's Cook or other people of math, sanitizer, face shields, a whole bunch of different things that have helped offset some of that stuff. We had gotten a, a small grant through Duke Energy that helped offset some costs on some PPA, PPE things that we've bought. A lot of the other things that, whether it's cleaning supplies, sprayers, foggers, hand sanitizer, a lot of the different things, just, the list goes on, a lot of those are covered through the operations fund. Through the process and all of this, as everybody's been learning, a lot of school corporations, and us being one of them, we, we took, through guidance from the state, was to put together a request for reimbursement through FEMA for, for expenditures that were necessary because of COVID, that were not something that was budgeted, that we were planning for when we, when we go through our processes. And so we submitted about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of, of things directly related to, that we thought we might have a chance for them to supply reimbursement on. To this point, it, it's been a very slow and clunky process. FEMA, from all accounts and people that I've worked with, and the state has, has brought in people to help work with school corporations to put in those requests. The system wasn't designed, and they weren't set up to, to handle some of the requests and things that they typically are handling, whether it's hurricanes and tornadoes and, and things of that nature. And at this point, we've received nothing, and I don't, I'm not really counting on us receiving anything. At this point in the grants portal, it shows that we have about, of that amount that I showed you, or told you, we have about fourteen thousand dollars that they say that they're approving, that they may reimburse for. But again, there's not a lot of communication as when that might happen. And I think that they're also knowing with that second stimulus package is the second round of CARES funds that will eventually come out to schools, and we're still waiting on guidance from the state as to what that will actually be as far as the amount, the processes and budgeting that we'll need to do, because just like when we got the first round of CARES, we had to submit a very specific round of CARES, we had to submit a very specific budget as to what it is that we plan to use those funds for, and they then had to approve those prior to them even being willing to reimburse. And so that same process will entail again. But that's just kind of a highlight of a lot of the things financially that we've done to cover those costs and to continue to make adjustments as we've been doing this entire time, so.
You know, we haven't been perfect in our response, but we've certainly have done our best and had our students and staff foremost in our minds. Our job's not finished. We still have a lot of work to do. We have a second semester to get through, but like I said, I'm, I'm very proud of our response to the COVID situation. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Irwin, do we have any ETA on the arrival of the Chromebooks for, for the staff?
Chromebooks have arrived. Chromebooks have arrived.
So for, for the ones, for the staff and for the?
I'll let, I'll let Ray.
Okay, okay. I was just. There's probably been a lot of delays with all that stuff.
Just a few.
Yeah, okay.
So the Chromebooks have arrived for the students, and that's what we ordered. Teachers are getting Windows PC laptops, and those have not arrived yet.
Okay.
We've been working with the manufacturer, our vendor, and we just changed the model again to hopefully expedite the shipment. The model that we had originally picked out was getting further and further on the shipping date, but another model that we have that was comparable was, we're accepting it and is the same price, but we'll be able to get those probably about 30 days sooner than what the last date, delivery date was issued. We were now moved all the way to April. We're still shooting for the middle to end of February for receiving of the teacher devices.
Now, we're still, we're still in the Dell, the Dell computer, like the next step down, maybe?
No, it's actually a better step up.
It's a better step, okay.
Yep, it's actually a step up on the processor, so that's pretty good for us. The Chromebooks for the students, we have done, received the 600. We have pushed 224 of those out to the fifth grade classroom, and we're working on those carts to go to the fourth grade and then third grade, and then we'll take what we have left over to try to, to weave those into the other classes in the K through two.
Okay.
So, yep, we're making progress, just takes a lot of time to build them and get them inventoried.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comments?
Just, I know fifth grade's very grateful.
Okay. And I, I think the community needs to know as well that Dr. Sanders goes through a, a lot of work when he's coming up with his recommendations. He is in contact with our local health department, he's in contact with the state, he's in contact with the board, he's in contact with, of course, administrators and teachers, parents, and he takes all of that information into consideration. So, you know, just want people to know how much work that you do to, that goes into trying to make the plan on how we respond to COVID, and thank you very much for all that hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Our next item is the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
Okay. I'll tell you what, I get excited when I talk about our goals, especially when you see most of them really having a positive impact on our school corporation. And, and these are goals that, that really, for the most part, have been since I started as superintendent. But I think if you went back and compared it every year, you would see that there's some twist and, and some adjustments to these goals. But, you know, the number one goal when I started and still is, for the corporation is to lead RBB to a position of financial strength. And we've, we've, from day one, have implemented the culture of doing business better. And, you know, I, I know Matt listens very well because he's now using that phrase back towards me, and say, we need to do this or that, you know, it's part of doing business better. I said, yeah, yeah, I've heard that before. But, you know, part of doing business better is, is, you know, we want to provide, identify ways to improve efficiency. It just makes your school corporation more successful, people are happier, they're more confident when, when the way you do business is efficient. We continue to look for ways to identify areas for, for saving money. And, you know, one of the best things that, that I think I've done at RBB is hiring or asking you to hire Matt Irwin, because he is very sharp, he's very detail-oriented, and, and he doesn't leave any stone unturned. And something I want to try to, to work harder to make sure that we're assuring equity in our decisions and our actions, to make sure that, that what we're doing is equitable to, to students, to staff, to administrators. And sometimes that's a challenge to be equitable, but I think, I think the, the closer you get to that, the harder you work at being equitable, the more success your corporation is going to have. And not many people could say this, but 2020 ended up better for us than 2019. And if you look at the financial situation, and, you know, COVID will have an impact on us, I'm sure, and that we'll feel that in, in 2021, but we're working hard to make sure that, that we continue down the path of, of getting to that position of financial strength. The second goal is sustained growth and enrollment, and I feel like we were, we were just getting that ball rolling in that direction when, when COVID hit. And so, you know, I have to say, our numbers from 2020 from 2019 are down, but it is directly related to families, and, and we respect that they have to make choices to, to select homeschool or another option, and we're going to work hard to get them back when this is all over. But we want to continue to build our preschool program. I want to take a new look at our marketing plan. So I want to spend some time over the next month to go back and look at the marketing plan that we, we started using, and look for ways to improve that, to make some adjustments so that we can make sure that we're telling our story. That's one thing that, that I think is, is the biggest challenge. You know, you could, you could put out there and say, well, here's our Ready Schools program. But how do we do that to, in a way to get the community to really understand it, to really buy into it? That takes a lot of talking. It's not just coming up with a nice slogan or putting up a billboard. You have to talk and have conversations with people. We need to find a way to do that with our marketing plan. And then, you know, at, at some point, COVID-19 will be behind us, and we want to work hard to, to re-enroll those families who, who out of safety made important and tough decisions. We want to reach back out to them and make sure that they're still part of the RBB family, and we want to support them coming back. Goal number three is to lead RBB into a strong partnership between the school corporation, our families, our local businesses, and our community. And one of the ways to do that is improve our communication. We got in one soup with the soup focus group before COVID hit, but I want to revisit that, and maybe we could figure out a way to do that virtually. But we, we definitely want to, to try to give families and parents an opportunity to share their insights with us. We've been working hard to meet with different businesses. Jamie Miller with the Ready Schools Initiative, we, a few weeks ago, we met with a couple representatives of Smithville, went to lunch with them, and we talked about the Ready Schools Initiative and how they could be a part of that. And so they're, what they're doing is they're taking that information back to their company and figuring out a way how they could be involved. And so we need to continue to do more of those types of conversations with our local businesses and service organizations. Goal number four is to lead RBB in creating an educational environment that designed to prepare students for success in their career of choice in tomorrow's world. I always want our students, that when they graduate from high school, that they're prepared to chase their dreams, and whatever those dreams might be. Ready Schools is going to be a big part of that. And one of the great successes that we're having right now is our mental health support team. There's so many obstacles that, that we can identify that limits students from learning. And you never know when a student is going through a tough time. And so having these mental health teams who regularly, regularly get together and talk about individual students and what's going on with them, and supporting the teachers, that's going to help us to prepare our students to be successful in whatever career they want to choose. And then, goal number five is just to continue to have the best possible response to COVID-19, to implement effective instructional strategies in an ever-changing environment, to meet the academic needs of all students, and also to continue to implement the most appropriate safety measures. These are the goals that drive us. These are not goals that are just, in fact, are not posted on any wall, but they're not goals that, that they're just collecting dust somewhere. These are goals that drive what we do. And I think RBB has a bright future ahead, and we're going to keep, keep marching towards that bright future. And I appreciate the support of the board and, and our teachers and our, our principals and, very appreciative.
Any questions or comments for Gary? Thank you for your continued success towards those, towards those goals. Our next item is RBB EA comments, and we have Mr. Yules present tonight.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome Larry, Larry, Larry Demoss to the school board. Great to see you here. Appreciate Dr. Sanders' support, constant communication with us, whether it's on things like the calendar and some input, or just our monthly discussions that we have all the time. It's, I'll always plug that, we have good communication, and it helps whenever we have easy conversations or tough ones to have, the door's always been open. My plan is honestly, as since the second semester started here, or the third weekend, I'll just kind of give you a teacher perspective of how it's going, because I don't know how much you hear about that. I know, I'm sure you talked to Dr. Sanders, but, you know, I'm a teacher first, and because of this role, I talk to other teachers, teachers in other buildings. I, you know, I don't live those lives. I, I live with somebody that lives that life, obviously, at the elementary, but as doctors... And then I saw this, and that kind of made me chuckle, because I said, oh, those are all the things I was going to say. But it really was, you know, experience has been the best teacher, because everybody had to go through, how do you want to start school without a blueprint? Nobody, nobody really knew what to do, and, you know, we had to jump in and do our best. And we had a lot of people did a lot of hard work on it. And again, you're not going to make everybody happy, because there wasn't any right answer. You just had to do what was best. And we started out with this hybrid schedule, again, at least from the high school perspective, and being a block, we only saw our kids one time live a week. You know, and again, hindsight's 2020, that was tough, that was rough, and I know, I think the elementary saw theirs twice a week, and it just wasn't easy. And then, then we went all in, and then when COVID really hit, that was, that did create a lot of chaos with batches of kids going out. That was, that was a real mess, and then we went all virtual, so I guess really this might be our fourth schedule. But really, all this is to say, Dr. Sanders and admin, appreciate you getting together and thinking about what can we do to start the second semester, because we, you obviously need to see the kids, that's, that's the biggest thing, but you got to minimize the risk, and it's, in my opinion, it's the best fit so far, without a doubt. I know it's either Mr. Ackman or Dr. Sanders, or both, you know, asking me and some others, you know, for, you know, what do you, you know, if we're going to do hybrid, what are we going to do? I said, well, we got to see them more than once a week, that's for sure. Don't ever want to do that again. And so kind of having this two-day, at least at the high school and junior high, this two-day rotation, it's been a huge improvement. You know, we have, we have some traction, we have, you know, a routine, and kids need routine, heck, we need routine, but it keeps us going. It's still a lot of work, because you have kids in and out, but it is, in my opinion, by far the best schedule we have going. You know, again, nothing's perfect, nothing's perfect until, as you said, we can get COVID behind us. I think there's three words I don't want to hear when it gets behind us, COVID, Zoom, and unprecedented. If I don't hear those words again, I'll be good. But really, I know the elementary teachers and our meeting with Dr. Sanders last week expressed gratitude for having their Wednesday planning time, and, you know, they're, I've always said this many times since living with an elementary teacher, they do a lot more than we do. Not that we don't do anything, but I don't want their load. They do a lot, and they, they really appreciate the planning time, and they're still meeting with kids that day, so it, you know, never ends. But again, thanks for that, and just want to give you just a, again, a little view into teaching this schedule, but like this schedule, and, you know, my two cents, I keep this rolling as long as we can, and before we take any big risks, because we at least have, again, we got some traction and a routine to go on, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Yules, and appreciate the insights that you bring to us every month. Thank you so much. Our board member comments, I'd like to start with Mr. Larry Demoss. Welcome him to his first regular school board meeting, and so we'll just put him right in the, the line of fire first, so.
Well, it seems strange to be following Mr. Yules.
I thought that was good.
But no, I just echo what he said, and he's being too modest. What the teachers have been doing is just amazing. They're really having to plan twice as much as they did in previous times, so it's, I'm, I'm amazed at how they're able to do it. I am so proud of them, I'm so touched by what they will do, their compassion, their devotion, their professionalism. I don't know how many of our elementary teachers drove to every student's house to drop off materials. And I've heard from teachers who said, well, I found out I have a student that lives on Tap Road, and another one said, that's nothing, I've got one that lives in Hyde Park. And then my wife has two on the other side of Cloverdale. Okay, and she went to their houses, so, yeah, it, they're, they're doing amazing things. I am so grateful to them, and I really admire what they are doing. And that goes for the staff and the administration as well. Mick Hammett, his job is so much more complex this year than it's ever been in the past, and he's doing an amazing job, and somehow keeping his sense of humor. And, but finally, thanks to the students. You know, I, I think they've handled it, they've figured out, this is the way that we've got to do it, this is what we're going to have to do. And with some exceptions, they're, they're figuring out how to do it. I feel bad for this year's seniors, as it was pointed out, they're going to have two years of, you know, a year and a half of, of strange deprivations, and they've had to make so many sacrifices, so I feel bad for them, but I'm so proud, proud of the way that our ECA participants have managed to keep things going with minimum of disruptions, and they keep, and they still represent Edgewood High School and, and RBB very, very well. And so, but, and I'm excited to be up here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We also want to welcome back Mr. Durnall for another term, so.
Thank you, Mr. Durnall, appreciate that. I just want to echo-
I just want to echo what Mr. Demoss just said. It's amazing to me the things that go on in this system. I am just so excited about the building program, this Ready School with Megan and Jamie and John told us about tonight, just going to go along with that so well. And I guess I'm just so proud of this system. I've said that many times over the years I've been on the board, but, you know, the building projects we're going through now is fantastic. I just think we're continuing to bring our schools to a much different, higher level. I really appreciate all we've done, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, we also want to welcome back Mr. Tucker, so.
Thank you. I'll just ditto and echo what Mr. Demoss and Mr. Durnall said there as well, and follow up what Mr. Yule said with three words, that thanks to, I guess, thanks to the village for patience, adaptability, and cooperation, because it's been a tough year. So keep plugging, proud of what everybody's doing, we will get through this at some point. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs?
I have nothing more to say. No, I do, I agree with everything that my fellow members have said, is we're very lucky to be in the community that we are. I feel like we're all very, very strong, and the amount of work that has been put out for administration of our teachers and our students, parents, families, everything that everybody's been through, it's just, you guys are doing an amazing job. But I want to, I want to really thank, and this is on a personal parent level for the junior high and high school, those are really, it's really difficult what you guys do for those students, because they need so much in pushing them towards their goals of what they're doing after school. And I can tell you from my kids' level, because I have one in each school, the hybrid that we're in right now, it's really, really doing what it's supposed to do. You're doing a great job with it, and my kids are flourishing. It's been a roller coaster with them, but, you know, on a personal level with the junior high and high school, I can't be more proud of what you guys have done with your schools, so I really appreciate that. I also want to thank all the donors, again. We cannot do it without you, and we just really appreciate you sending, you know, we know that's difficult financially for a lot of families, and anybody that can, you know, give donations like that, that means so much to our corporation, so we appreciate it. And welcome, Mr. Demoss, so glad you're up here with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, it's hard to, hard to top any of that, but I just think we're starting out this year in a very positive way. We've got, you know, the Ready Schools that we've been talking about. We have met some of our very critical financial goals. We are dealing with this situation in, situation in a way that I'm just so proud of all the hard work going into that. We're working on our bus fleet, we're getting meals to the kids. We are just...
It goes on and on.
It does, it just goes on and on, and I'm just so proud of the team that we have, proud of each and every member of our staff, and I just, you know, thank all of you so much, and I thank the parents for being supportive. I know it's difficult, we've put some, not we, but COVID has put parents in a very difficult situation this year, and they've had a lot to deal with, and we appreciate them sticking with us and helping us through this. So just so thankful, you know, our technology, we have gone so far with getting things updated, I mean, just our building projects, we're getting our preschool built and to open in the fall, and just, there's just so much excitement going on right now, and to think of that in the times we're in, I really appreciate the hard work everybody's put in. So with that, thank you very much for attending tonight, and this meeting is adjourned, will be signatures.